Okay, and first on our agenda, we have public comment. So if you'd like to make public comment, now would be the time to make your way up to the podium. And please state your name and address for the record, and there should be a sheet there where you can please sign in.
Do you mind if I sign in at first?
Not at all. The feed is working. Ooh, I sound good.
You sound great.
Okay, so I'm kind of jumping to the front of the line here. My name is Ken Paradiso. I'm a Highland Park resident. I have one child who will be entering the middle school, and we were somewhat surprised to find out that the French language is no longer going to be offered as an option for languages at the HP school. Now, I've talked to Dr. Taylor about this, and we emailed a little bit back and forth. And clearly, my understanding is that there was a major effort to find a French teacher. I still am not fully clear on all the specifics, but it sounds like there was a major effort, and that at some point, an email went out, or a letter went out. I don't know how many people responded to that letter that was having a vote, if I understand it correctly, and Mandarin was the chosen alternative. And very, very quickly, within about a month, it seems, a suitable applicant was found. I have numerous questions as to why there was such a difference between availability of Mandarin teachers versus French teachers, but primarily, I would like to move forward and try to address the question of what can be done for the students in the district, and we're talking 7th and 8th graders, and even incoming 6th graders, who have, in the case of the 7th and 8th graders, had some French education.
I'm sorry, can you make sure you stay close to the microphone? You'd be surprised on the recording how quiet you get when you're not near your mic.
I have a tendency to not go toward a microphone.
I saw you gravitating slowly away.
Well, primarily, it's because there's this big thing between you guys, and maybe we can just do that would already help. Okay. So, getting back to my train of thought.
Sorry, my apologies.
Sure, no, 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 it's important.
Look, now I did it again.
So, there are 7th grade students and 8th grade students who have already received some French education, and now that education will be more or less terminated, and they'll be forced to find some alternate. You also have 6th grade students who have done some preparation for learning French, and now that's suddenly changed. And the analogy that I just gave to Dr. Taylor would be like getting on a plane for Las Vegas and landing in New Mexico. It said, I said, "Los Angeles" and landing in Las Vegas. But the point being, you knew where you were going, and then suddenly, something happens. And it seemed to have happened very, very quickly from the perspective of the parents. We really, as far as, I believe, last Monday, when we checked the system, our child was signed up for French, and on Tuesday, when we checked it, that had been taken away. So, there's also a communication issue, but there's also a bit of a surprise element. I think that there's a substantial number of individuals who are just completely unaware that this has happened. It's happening when people are on vacation, it's happening when people are out of town and they're busy, and so it really is difficult to maintain that level of communication under these circumstances. But, the point is, what proposals can you suggest as a board for the students to continue their French education, the ones who have received it, for them not to basically lose the education that they got?
Scott, can you address that?
Well, one of the requests I received from a parent, as well as a member of the board, was for me to look into how we might accommodate those kids who have a vested interest already in coming into the 8th grade, in French, those kids who took French 6th and 7th grade. And unfortunately, the teacher's schedule at the high school cannot accommodate us to, cannot accommodate the 8th graders because of the mismatch in the middle and high school schedule. What we have looked into is the potential to offer the program virtually, and I mentioned that to you, we talked very briefly about what that would entail. There are two platforms we could consider if we wanted to provide 8th graders, again, 8th graders who've taken French for both 6th and 7th grades, some instruction. It would be, incidentally, 9th grade level French instruction, not 8th grade level. One platform is Virtual High School, which is the nonprofit consortium that we're already using. The more cost-effective option would be to work with a group called Edutier. The difference is, VHS, Virtual High School, is more of a discourse, a correspondence course. Kids check in to their email, to the platform, the VHS platform, and interact with the professor and other classmates. Edutier actually provides taped video lectures and adds that element to the correspondence piece. At least you would hear, see nonverbals, the language as it's taught. We identified 26 students who fall into this cohort. 26 kids took French in both 6th and 7th grade. So, we could offer the program to these 26 kids. And what come at a cost? Again, the most cost-effective option would be using Edutier. We would have to pay $399 per student, that's for the year. The total is $10,374. That's if we went with some kind of an in-school program for 8th grade. I mean, if we wanted to make the investment, we could open that up to 6th and 7th graders, but then, we're almost at the point at which we're paying for another teacher, and our budget, our budget does not allow for that. Dr. Paradiso and I also talked a little bit today about potentially doing something after school. I don't see that being able to happen this year unless it was staffed by graduate students or volunteers. As you're aware, the HPEA contract calls for us to follow a very strict protocol when proposing new extracurricular activities, and we have to honor that. I mean, it's contractual now, as of the board's approval of the most recent contract. And I'm willing to look into that. I mean, perhaps there are people who, younger people, who are not looking to go to the teaching route, who might want to help out after school, have a French club of some kind. So, those are just some ideas I have out there to consider.
Well, I mean, I think it's also important to confirm, though, that we are, my understanding is that the district has committed to maintaining the high school teacher for the current 9th graders on until they graduate.
Correct.
So, no high school students are going to lose their French program. It just, moving into the future, it won't be available, but for the students 9th, 10th, 11th grade, as they move through, there will still be that option available to them for French.
Could I ask, with...
Not current 6th and 7th graders. Current 6th and 7th graders, that option's not going to be available, but if we can to work out something for the current 8th graders, who have taken it for two years, and then it would be available to them as they filter through the high school.
I just want to add this really quickly. I'm the parent of one of the 8th grade French students, and last year, also a 6th grade student last year. So, I have a 7th grader and a 9th grader who both took French. They did not have French for an entire year last year because of the personnel issues that we were dealing with. The whole year, they were watching movies, they were doing card games, any number of things, but learning French. So, for all intents and purposes, we're dealing with a 6th grade moving up to 7th grade, who has only had one year, an 8th grade who has only had, you know, effectively one and a half years. I just wanted to say that, you know, from a parent's perspective.
Is there a couple of, excuse me, one second. A couple of quick things. I wonder if I, just if we could back up a little bit for the benefit of the people who are maybe watching streaming, or tonight, or delay. And Michelle brings up a good point, because this does go back a year. Scott, could you just kind of go through that timeline of, you know, when we lost the middle school French teacher last year, and what the follow-up and the issues have been for this entire past year?
I could do that briefly, and then I will, I'll tell you what I'll do, is provide on our website, on the front page news section, the handout that I provided for anybody who appeared tonight. And it's three pages, and it overviews the timeline, and other means of trying to recruit candidates. So, when Mr. Patterson suddenly resigned in November, we scrambled to find a replacement. And as I told Dr. Paradiso this afternoon, the first route we had to go was to find a substitute, somebody who at least could supervise the students. We had somebody for about three weeks, took us through Christmas break. At the same time, around in December, early December, we started to press hard to find a permanent teacher. We, on November 23rd, posted on various websites. We use websites like NJ Hire, NJ School Jobs, K-12 Job Spot, very popular sites. We also posted to Star Ledger, which is a very high-profile medium for teacher job postings. We went back at it after we didn't get a good candidate out of that initial pool, and this document does identify the number of candidates we collected overall. We interviewed 22 candidates between November and as recently as July. Went back at it in January, when we didn't do well in the first round, and again, posted on our major websites. We didn't post in the Star Ledger at that point, because the ads are costly. They're a couple of thousand dollars per ad. But we did then go back to the Star Ledger in April, which is around the time when we tend to get a nicer pool of candidates, because it's when the kids are graduating, and again, no luck. We tried again July 18th by posting on our website, on those websites that I mentioned earlier, again. What we were finding out, after we reached out to our network, and we were connected with the teacher preparation coordinators at Montclair, TCNJ, Rutgers, we also reached out to FLENG, the foreign language educators of New Jersey. Our own high school French teacher has a network, a professional network. We asked her to help us recruit. Our middle school principal is an ex-world language teacher from Lawrence, so she tapped her network, also spoke to a couple of local principals who she interacts with. A lot of folks are having the same difficulty we were having. And after all was said and done, we were led to administer the survey. The survey was really, there were two parts. One was a question that listed a number of languages, the most popular spoken languages in Mandarin included. And then another question, I think it was the second question, was open-ended, asking for respondents to tell us what other ideas they had. Well, we got a potpourri of different ideas. Italian, Latin came up, although I think Latin was one of the choices. And it's arguable as to whether Latin is actually a language or not, we talked about that, but push came to shove, we were compelled, if we were going to start the school year with something in place for our kids, to move on what was the chosen alternative, and that was Mandarin. Now, the reason why we were able to find a Mandarin teacher so quickly relative to our French search is multifold. One, turns out, we are neighbors to a university that's recognized as, nationally recognized as one of the top programs in the United States for Mandarin language teacher preparation. And some of that has to do with the relationship that Dr. Mary Curran has established with the Chinese government. It turns out that there's a US government grant to promote Mandarin language teaching preparation, because the State Department has identified the language as being a critical need language for a variety of reasons. And the Chinese government, of course, is also promoting efforts to send people overseas to teach Mandarin. So, we were able to find somebody, really thanks to, in large part, our relationship with Rutgers. So, I hope that, that's the skinny version, really, of the process.
So, that's really helpful, and I guess my follow-up to that, and this is in response to your comment about the high school French teacher not being able to accommodate. So, we have 26 8th graders, and how many kids are taking 9th grade French, French 1 in 9th grade?
I'll look that number up now.
Yeah. So, I guess my question was, I assume that there is no space in the 9th grade classroom, or perhaps there are scheduling conflicts, maybe?
It was a scheduling thing, yeah.
There is also a scheduling conflict for those now 8th grade former French students to take Mandarin. There is no Mandarin 1 scheduled for the time slot that there is, that's open for an 8th grader. This is what I'm hearing. So, there's only Mandarin 3 scheduled for that grade, where they cannot take Mandarin 3, because they never had it before. So, those kids are being told that they cannot take Mandarin.
I wasn't made aware of that, so I will look into it right away. And how did you, were you contacted?
A parent, a parent, yeah, contacted me, who was in touch with the guidance counselor, who looked through the, you know, genesis, I don't know what they're looking at, and said, "There's no way we could fit it into an 8th grade student's schedule," because of the way that the gym and the maker space, I think, there was some issue where there was only two periods of gym, they could not fit Mandarin into an 8th grade schedule. So, that's going to be an issue.
It isn't, it is, but we don't have a Mandarin program in the high school. So, if a student wanted to start taking Mandarin at the 8th grade level with Mandarin 1, for example, that would be one year of Mandarin, because they would not be able to continue into Mandarin 2 in the high school for a 9th grade.
How can we even be offering Mandarin 3?
I think there's native speakers, Mandarin for native speakers. A significant portion of the middle school speaks Mandarin.
I do want to get back to you, is that a question or a comment, Michelle?
Comment, comment.
Okay. So, we do have 12 students in French 1 at the high school level. We're running one section, French 1, 12 students. So, that's an answer to, I think it was your question, Mr. Aguirre.
In terms of, may I ask a question about going forward into the future? So, when, is the plan that the current teacher who is able to teach French will only be able to deal with that cohort that's currently in 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th grades?
Correct.
Okay, so if you're going from 8th grade, you're in 8th grade this year, then the following year, there will be no high school French available to that person? Right, correct?
That is...
In 1819?
Correct. Well, actually, what I would propose is if we do go forward, if the board is approving of me expanding the funds to provide these 26 students Spanish, French instruction, we might want to delay one more year, the phasing out of the high school French teacher, so she could accommodate next, the 2018, 2019 9th graders.
Okay, so, but then, you know, this year's 7th graders would not have French as an option?
Right, they would be the first class impacted.
I'm just trying to figure out how we're, okay. So, there would be a limited cohort of students that will still be able to take French, it's just...
Just, you know, I have to tell you our numbers, and I can give you a sample of numbers here for high school French. French 2 class currently has four students in it, running one section. French 3, we have nine students. French 3 honors, nine students, I'm sorry, 11 students, two separate sections, no, one section. French 4, nine students. French 5 honors, 15 students, and French 5, six students. I mean, they're small numbers.
Right. So, what is the plan for Mandarin going forward? In other words, if we do decide to, well, if we do Mandarin, starting this year, for this year's middle schoolers, are we going to expect to expand that program when this year's, starting next year, so that this year's 8th graders who start Mandarin 1, if they can?
They would continue in high school.
Would be able, okay. So, would that be the same Mandarin teacher? Will be able to accommodate the upcoming cohort?
Yes, yes. I mean, and there has been discussion at the curriculum committee level about expanding in both directions, moving down and moving up. It's still under consideration.
So, Mandarin taken in 8th grade is not going to be a sort of a wasted cost, or sunk cost that you can never get back?
I think the point, I'd like to make sure the community and Dr. Paradiso knows, is the community being those who are watching, is that, I mean, we, obviously, I have nothing against the French culture or the French language. We're just committed to offering our kids as many world language alternatives as we can expose them to, and once we do commit to a language, Mandarin in this case, I think we have to circle the wagons around it and really make it the best we can, which is why I think if we're going to, we should be talking the future.
I just, I do, I have a quick question, sorry.
Just as long as you get close to your microphone.
There's been a lot of internal discussion, and so, if I understand correctly, and I'd like to just recap here, the children, the students that are going into 8th grade will have options, the students who are going into 7th grade will not have any options, and the students who are going to 6th grade will not have any options.
That's my proposal.
And what you just said was, you're committed to giving the many options, as many options as you can, to the students, but you basically still have two options.
But we can't run three languages. I mean, A, budgetarily, we can't run three languages, and the issue is, we have not been able to find a suitable French teacher.
So, then you're committed to maintaining two languages, but you're not committed to giving as many options as possible?
No. In a small district, it's just not, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify, based on the language, you were leading me to believe that there's, you know, an effort for multiple languages, but it seems like that's fallen short.
I think we wanted, I mean...
Well, I mean, there's many things, as a district, we would love to be able to provide students that just don't fit budgetarily, unfortunately. The question, I think, was whether we replace French with anything, and that's what Dr. Taylor is trying to do, is replace French in the...
I was just clarifying, it's not what I'm saying.
Right, no, no, so he wants to have more options than we would otherwise have, because otherwise, we were going to have just Spanish at this point, unfortunately.
So, instead of just having Spanish, now we have, okay, that, in that context, I see what you're saying, but it seems like we're switching out and reducing in some cases, rather than expanding.
And can I add one thing? The reason that it might seem to parents that this was a hasty, you know, last-minute notification, it really, the process wasn't. So, we have been talking about this in committee, but we were really hopeful that we wouldn't have to change, that we were hopeful we were going to find a French teacher and not disrupt the languages.
I completely understand.
Right. It didn't work out that way.
But from the perspective of the parents, I know that my wife actively asked, is this, you know, is this solid, do we have this, is this going on, and that, yes, there'll be a teacher there, and in fact, we signed up for it. So, again, it wasn't really until the last moment, and by that, I mean, we found out on Monday.
Right.
And so, there was really a lack of communication, and in addition, you know, it's one of those things where you don't really expect a language to be pulled from a system when you move to a new community. And so, you know, we would have made, or at least, we would have factored that into our decision as to where we were living, if we knew that, you know, the language could just be pulled. You know, we also budget, like all families, like you guys do, and we didn't budget having to have a private tutor teach our child's French, because we knew the school had it up until last week. So, there's a lot of subtle things, and some not-so-subtle, that is going to be difficult here, and there's just no way.
Right, which is, which is why we were hoping it wouldn't happen, but it has happened. And, you know, hopefully, in time, people will embrace Mandarin. And of those 20-something kids that were planning on taking French, there might be some of those kids that are going to prefer to take Mandarin. So, it is, you know, an individual choice, but, you know...
There were 20 students enrolled, 20, enrolled for 6th grade?
Well, you were just saying, how many that were going to be taking French?
I'm sorry.
How many students were, how many students were enrolled?
In French?
In French for 6th grade, 7th grade?
I might be able to pull that number up, I might, or I might not have it, and I can get back to you by email about it.
I think you mentioned 7th and 8th grade, but I didn't hear how many students, you know, again, if we're dealing with two or three students, that clearly says something, but if we're dealing with 20 or 30, that also says something.
Yeah, so, Scott, maybe you just say 20-something?
That was 8th grade.
Oh, that was 8th grade, yeah. But, I mean, I...
I mean, our enrollment in the high school in French has dwindled.
Has dwindled. I mean, and that was one of the things that we looked at as we went through this process, was, you know, our kids sustaining French all the way through, and we did seem to have far more kids who sustained Spanish all the way through than sustained French all the way through.
But you had that data before anything, so now, you're saying, in retrospect, that many people were dropping it and not keeping up with it, but you had that data going into it.
Well, we were just looking at all angles of this.
But if you were...
But that wasn't the reason for the dropping.
No, 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 that's not the reason.
The reason for the dropping was, was not being able to find a teacher.
It started with the teacher leaving. That was, that was the catalyst.
But you're using that now as a reason for, well, and there wasn't that many people interested.
No, I'm not using it as a, I'm not using it as anything, it's just merely a fact. I mean, it's, it wasn't a, I mean, I think it would be, yeah, I mean, even if we had 60 kids who were taking it, the fact was, we couldn't find a French teacher. I mean, it made it a little bit easier on our end as a, to make it the decision as a board, because honestly, we're not even supposed to run a section if it's under, how many kids?
Oh, it's combined now.
I don't have the policy, as I look it up.
According to policy, there's many sections of this that we shouldn't even be running according to our policy, because there's not enough students enrolled. I mean, we have to...
Darcy, a number of the French classes are combined, the levels are combined, so it does, you know, make a longer class.
And that, moving forward, if we had heard that a year ago, that there was this sort of problem, none of this information was given to the parents, and so if we had heard, you know, listen, there's a low enrollment, that it's challenging our bylaws to even keep this open, if we had heard that the teacher was going to resign, I don't know how much...
Well, we don't know those things in advance.
Well, hold on a second, I heard you said he resigned in December, but...
Well, but all of these things were, but I just, but just to be clear, I mean, I feel like all of a sudden, things are getting a little confrontational, and we certainly don't mean them to be. But, but all these things are public. I mean, all of these things are voted upon in public meetings, they're all documented in our agendas, so none of this was done in secret or behind closed doors. This is all a matter of public record in our agendas, the resignations, the, you know, we've been discussing this, you know, at the board table, updating the community on, so it has all been public, it's just, you know, how many people sit at home and watch our board meetings? Not very many, you know, it's, it's not exactly scintillating, but it has been a public debate for quite some time.
And I do need to point, I need to point out, it's been seven weeks since I sent a letter home and mailed it, emailed it twice to families. Seven weeks, I guess the summer, people might be on vacation, off, out wherever, without communication contact, but seven weeks, it's almost two months, and nobody approached me about their concern until, what, last week?
Right, so, I mean, we have made concerted efforts to make sure that we are discussing it in public, that Dr. Taylor sent notification out to middle school families, you know, we've, we, this is a hard, well, hold on, this, I mean, this is, this is one of the biggest challenges of any public body, is to disseminate the information out, and, you know, we've certainly tried our best to do that, and it's, it's never going to be a perfect process, you know, but I think all of us sitting around the table feel like, you know, we've made this process as public as, as is possible, but it's still going to be, there's still going to be inconveniences, certainly, and students that would prefer the French over another language.
As an indicator to how many people saw the letter and/or were able, like, I, my understanding was, and I didn't see it, but, you know, I'm also not opening the mail, you know, we, division of labor, right? So, point being is, my understanding is, that letter didn't say that there's a substantial chance we're going to get rid of the French program.
I can read portions of the letter, if you'd like.
That would be great, and especially if it says somewhere in there that the French program is in, you know, not going to be there.
If I could ask a really quick question? You had mentioned earlier that your wife had spoken to someone in the district who had guaranteed her that there would be a French program?
Said that, oh, you know, we're working on it, of course, there's going to be a French teacher, that sort of thing, was my understanding. I wasn't there at the conversation, but she was quite concerned about it. I don't know who she called, I can, you know, she's sleeping right now, she's in France. So, you know, it's going to be difficult to get in touch with her. So, if you want specifics, if you leave me your name, I will, I will send that back to you. But she's been very concerned about this, and so she's been asking, and she was told, "Oh, yes, you know, every effort's being made, of course, we're going to have a French teacher," was my understanding, that's what I heard, you know, my telephone, where I'm hearing, right.
Right, I mean, it's all kind of water under the bridge, I guess, I'm just curious, because I don't know that if anyone had been paying attention to what we had been talking about, you know, in the district, if they would have ever said anything like a guarantee.
I do want to point out in the letter that I did send on July 10th, after I laid out the concern about the quality of the French program, I pointed out that districts all around the country are having a hard time filling positions. In the third paragraph, I state that "This reality has compelled Ms. Semier, Ms. Ackley and I to explore alternative world language programs to provide our middle school students in addition to Spanish. The school district is fully committed to providing world language instruction, which is why we're asking for your input as we explore other options." And then, in the last paragraph, I state, "Another letter will be provided to middle school families and guardians later in the summer that will include an update about our progress and potential scheduling information for students who may be interested in enrolling in the new world language offering if such is provided." This is after I laid out difficulty we were having filling the French teaching position. So, I think I put it out there.
Well, you know, I personally, if I wrote that letter, would have said, "We are in the, we are in the high probability, or at least some probability, of the French language program being terminated." That's how I would have ordered it. But again, everyone has to word things, you know, their own way, but I would have made it explicit that this is a reality, this is what's, what's going forward. So, when you read something, I mean, how often have you read an EULA? Right? When you sign up to something, do you read the end user agreement? They had one that had language in there that basically said, "You're going to commit 20 hours of community service," and everyone just said, "Yes." So, at some point, you know, in explicit letters, it has to be, "Oh, my gosh, we're going to lose the French program, can we, you know, get..." going to lose the French program, can we, you know, get some feedback on it?
Fair point.
Okay, so, if, do you have any other questions or comments that you'd like to make at this point?
Is there any other alternatives that you can suggest that, for students who are interested in pursuing French, are there, are there any other alternatives other than the virtual learning system, which it sounds like is going to be restricted to eighth graders? Is there any possibility for entering sixth graders or seventh graders for that matter? Or even students who just want to take an extra language, but maybe don't want to sign up for, for, you know, full credit, et cetera? Is there any way that we can move forward on that?
I mean, I honestly, I don't, I don't see what that would be. I mean, again, historically, the district, as long as I've been around the district, has provided two language options. Providing a third is, is just not economically feasible at this junction, so I don't, I don't see that beyond the, the commitment that we've made to phase out for the French students who are currently taking it, and, you know, hopefully, if we can, to include those eighth graders who've had the two years of language, I don't, I don't see that there would be an option for the sixth or seventh graders, no.
And again, I just want to mention that the last year's French instruction at the middle school was not happening, you know, it was, it was our intention to find someone, and as, as a parent who lived through that process, I mean, I'm also a board member, so I was privy to information, but it was pretty clear that, you know, we were dealing with a situation that was tough to fill, you know, personnel-wise, because we went from November till June without a proper instructor, so I even have concerns about the virtual option because of that. You know, if my student who was entering ninth grade were to take ninth grade level French, he would be completely underwater, he would not be able to keep up.
Let alone an eighth grader taking that.
Yeah, so, because he did not have his eighth grade.
Yeah, I mean, it's, obviously, it's a less-than-ideal situation that we've been, we've found ourselves in, and we're, you know, we're trying to recover from it as, as gracefully as possible by offering another really viable language option for students.
So, are the language, is taking a language, a foreign language, a requirement? And if so-
Not in middle school, no.
Not in middle school?
No.
So, someone could opt out and, and take private lessons in whatever language they're interested in, they wouldn't necessarily have to take Mandarin or Spanish if they decided to take Japanese, French, or-
I don't believe so, but in a high school, it's a requirement, I think there's a two-year high school requirement.
Yes, it is, that's actually, yeah, it is a two-year requirement, and are you suggesting that that would happen during the school day somehow?
And that would be a possibility, is that possible?
During the school day, I don't know how we could allow some students who could afford private lessons to have private lesson, and we'd run into all kinds of issues there.
Well, look, I mean, even if that student did so, if somehow we can work it out in the schedule, we couldn't, I mean, it, it does, it does leave open equity questions.
Yeah.
Are we going to allow certain kids to get this extra value because they can pay for it on their own?
All the more reason why I was saying it would be great if there was some program that everyone had.
But, but what you're asking for is a third language, and then we're back to the same budgetary constraints. I mean, we, we, we are, we are working every year with a slimmer and slimmer budget, and working harder and harder not to have that impact.
Why is the budget going down when my taxes are going up?
This is a whole nother conversation where, you know, you, if, if you pay attention to our state funding, you'll see that that's been flat for the last seven or eight years, and we're actually getting less money from the state than we were 10 years ago, so, you know, that's a whole nother ball of wax. But, yes, taxpayers are paying more, but the state is paying less, and we have more students, and it's, you know, a whole very tricky calculus, but it's, we are trying to do more with less every year.
Yeah, so, I'm still kind of stuck on the suddenness of being signed up for something on Monday and then suddenly finding out Tuesday it wasn't.
I mean, but quite frankly, sir, this happens, you know, in middle school and high school, it, it, it does happen. I mean, we have classes that need to be, you know, are taken out because there isn't enough enrollment, and this will happen, you know, throughout middle school and high school, where a course is offered and then a course is not, is not offered for multiple reasons, not, not lack of interest, whatever the interest may be. I understand it can be, you know, frustrating and disappointing, but-
We're giving kids options, and they have time between now and next week to consider what those options might be. I, I don't know, I don't know what else we could do at this point, except go to France, recruit teachers, and bring them back.
Well, so, along those lines, and we discussed this, the advertisements that I was seeing for the French teacher were mostly part-time, I still haven't seen the full-time.
As I pointed out to you-
You sent, you sent one, but it didn't, it, it was, didn't have any parameters on it.
As I pointed out this afternoon, all the postings in the, through the media outlets that we use, you can see on this handout, were for full-time French positions, just as we advertised for a manner of position. The position that you cited, which I think you said offered pay of $95 an hour, was for the substitute we had to hire.
$95 a day.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I know, I forgive, boy, we'd be thankful.
I'll take it at $95 now.
That was for the substitute position we had to fill as soon as Eric Patterson left back in November, which is why I think you said it was dated around that time, correct?
No, actually, I'm, I'm now seeing one, long-term substitute teacher, this was from NJSchoolJobs.com. This one was 12/28, but I also, and that was the 90 to 95, so that was end of December, but then there was an, sorry, and then there was another one that I'm, I'm trying to go through my emails, I'll, I'll send all this to you.
Yeah, you're welcome to.
But, I, I, I don't know if, if due to grant funding, it was, there was some ability to help defray the costs of the Mandarin program, or anything like that.
No, not at all.
No.
Okay, because you mentioned a, a grant earlier on that the State Department had identified.
That's, that's for, for schools of education to work. I mean, we, we went to the same state, you know, the same graduate, the same education programs for French teachers, and they're just not producing French teachers anymore for whatever those reasons are, those are far beyond our control, and in the letter that Dr. Taylor sent out, he, you know, referenced an article in the Atlantic that, you know, referenced the same exact problem. Right now, we're experiencing the same issue with the football program, we can't field a football team, because there have been changes in, in demographics and people's attitudes towards football, and I was with the coach this afternoon in a meeting with Mr. Lassiter, and he said the same thing is happening in East Brunswick, in East Brunswick, they've only got like 30 kids interested in their high, in their football program. So, preferences change, times change, programs change, and, you know, it's going to impact some kids who, or families who are particularly interested in some program or language or sport or whatever, but public schools just can't, can't offer everything, unfortunately, as much as we would, as much as we would like to.
I pulled up ads from South Brunswick and Matutchen, who right now are currently looking for the week before school starts, looking for French, middle school, middle school French teachers.
Really?
Yeah, so, it's-
It's not just us, unfortunately.
Is there any way for multiple districts, or is that something that just doesn't work to-
Shared.
In essence, yeah.
Because if we had space in our schedule to provide the employee we would hire to another district, it could work, but we would need to employ that person full-time to fill these five sections of French here.
So, that's not, and, and, okay, so, if, if I can summarize my understanding of, of where we're at, is that eighth graders might be given an option for some sort of learning alternative that's being looked into?
If they've taken French six, during sixth and seventh grade years.
Eighth graders who have, right.
Correct.
Sixth and seventh graders are basically, there's, there's no recourse for them.
Correct, unfortunately.
And then-
For French.
For French, sorry, sorry, I'm primarily sticking to the main topic.
We have a thing.
And then for requirements in the middle, middle school, there's no language requirement in the middle school, there's a language requirement for two years of education in the high school.
Correct.
Is it possible to waive that requirement, much the way a university waives a requirement? For example, I waived math, I waived Italian, I waived chemistry and, and many other subjects because I had AP credits walking in, and it was, you know, is there any certification?
Not as far as I'm aware, but what you can't do is invoke a policy called Option Two at the high school level, which allows kids to take alternative programs that might interest them, let's say, off-site at Rutgers. Those students will obviously receive a grade if they take a class at Rutgers or somewhere else, but that grade would not be weighted towards their GPA here.
Okay.
Again, it's about equity, we want to be sure that-
No, that I understand, but I'm just saying, if they wanted to focus and not have to take on another language, if they felt that they're already, their hands are full with advanced French, is it possible to waive that requirement?
Well, I, not the world language requirement, but the seat time requirement. In other words, you can provide your child, if you're willing to transport him to, and pay, of course, for tuition to another school for French, let's say, but I can't waive the requirement that he take a world language, wherever it might be, for two years, as long as it's from an accredited institution, obviously.
Oh, okay, so that's-
But again, because we want to provide an equitable opportunity for kids to, to have a fighting chance at GPA like their peers, we don't weigh the grade that the child receives in an alternative experience towards his, or his GPA. And that's a concern for some people, which is something you need to consider.
Yeah, yeah, and so, okay, so that's-
And when we get to that point, assuming you're still here in Highland Park and you haven't left us for French, we can, we can, we, it's something we can certainly talk to you about, we actually already at the parents via the handbook, we talked to the kids about Option Two.
Okay, all right, so, so there can be options on the table.
At the high school level.
Right, right. I, you know, I, I, I think you sense the frustration here, I think that there are, and, and I didn't mean to be confrontational as you labeled me.
No, 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 not, I, I meant back in both directions, I was not labeling you.
But, you know, clearly, when there's a, and again, you made a very substantial effort to get the information out there, but, you know, I, I think, A, the combination of it being the summer, B, the combination of people just getting a lot of spam mail, I mean, you just do get a lot of mail, I told you, I get somewhere from, you know, anywhere little as 20 and sometimes 100 emails a day, and at some point, you know, you're, you're skimming, because you have to. And, and so it's quite possible that many people miss this, and it's also quite possible that there's a, a lack of enthusiasm, and no one's really wants to fight for maintaining this language, and, and again, that, all those things that you have to take into consideration, I understand that. But, from the parent's viewpoint, it would be really helpful if we, you know, kind of saw this coming. It, it sounds like you guys had a much better understanding of this, but you're living it day in, day out, we're kind of coming at it from the periphery, and again, it feels like you're a passenger on an airplane, decisions are being made, and somehow you wound up in a city that you didn't know you were landing in. And, and even though, if you, oh, but if you had read the seat ticket thing that we sent you, there's a possibility that you could land in the city and have to transport yourself. And, and, and so, it kind of feels like that. And, and so that's, I think that that's where the frustration comes from, and I, I kind of have a feeling that I'm not alone in this, even though I'm alone in the room. I have a feeling that there are other people that are going to be expressing similar concerns, they just haven't had the time or even knowledge yet of this happening, and it might be voiced. But again, if it isn't, then-
Well, if you can help us devise some magical way of getting information out, we'd appreciate it, because we have, we've yet to find it, you know, if you send out, you send out a lot of emails, it's too many emails, if you don't send out enough emails, it's not, you know, it's, it's very hard to communicate these issues, you know, which is why we, we go out of our way to do all, take all these steps that we can now tell you when you're here, that we have taken them, to say, you know, this has been very much considered, we have put a lot of thought into this, so that you do at least know that, you know, this wasn't done hastily, this wasn't done, you know, without a lot of thought and without a lot of effort.
How many people responded to that letter, if you don't mind my asking?
The survey?
The survey.
61.
61, out of?
A lot.
Well, I have about 125 students in each grade, so I'd have to guesstimate, oh, about four or five hundred parents, families, guardians.
Does he, do you have a suggestion for a better way for us to get?
I do.
What is that suggestion? Yeah, tell us.
So, my suggestion is that when you have a board meeting, you have to have a quorum, you need to have a minimal number of members there in order for the meeting to proceed, and perhaps a similar thing could happen at the parent level, where if a major decision like this is being made, you need a minimum of 50% of the parents to-
With all due respect, I would love that kind of parental engagement, I would love that, we would all love that.
Please.
That's always our goal, but you don't typically see that or get that. We've done everything we can in our power to make our meetings as accessible as possible, you can see, we're just having a special meeting tonight, we have a camera person here, this is being broadcast live, it will be up on our website tomorrow, if not the next day, we're doing everything we can conceivably do to be as public and as transparent as possible, we would love to have that kind of buy-in, believe me, it's next to impossible to get.
Can I just make one suggestion myself?
Yeah.
I think that it would be very helpful for the students coming from Bartle, that transition into the middle school, to have some parent, you know, open house in June before they leave, or even in, going back to May, where these kinds of things could come up, because if we had had that sort of a forum, this would have come up, because parents would have asked about what foreign language, you know, oh, my student signed up for this, blah, blah, and then we would have, you know, obviously, it would have led to a discussion of, well, we want to have French, but we're having a really hard time finding a French teacher. So, to have something like that may head off these issues in the future.
Because I think the sixth grade parents definitely got the brunt of this, I mean, everybody who is in middle school French now is totally aware that it was a deteriorating situation, that if you're coming from sixth, from, I'm sorry, if you're coming from fifth grade to sixth grade, you wouldn't have had that up-to-the-minute experience with the French program sort of falling apart after Mr. Patterson resigned suddenly. So, I think that's an excellent idea, something that would sort of help those parents who aren't getting the message from the middle school, for obvious reasons.
Yeah.
I'll make a note to get back to that, Ruth.
Should we, should we serve food, like?
Food is always good, I think.
Popular thing.
But that's a great idea, I mean, I think the sixth grade parents really got left behind there, and it wasn't intentional. I mean, believe me when I say that, everybody involved in the French program in the middle school was like, oh, tearing our hair out, parents, kids, the substitutes who, you know, had the pleasure of being with us. So, it, it does strike me that we have an informational lacuna there for sixth grade parents, which is problematic.
No, I had heard that there were problems and that, but it was my understanding that they were going to be resolved and, you know-
Well, we hoped. We were desperately trying.
We all did.
Well, so, so on the other side, maybe it would be better for you to express more on the pessimistic side and say, right from the start, instead of saying, we're hoping to find a, a teacher, say that we're almost certainly going to cancel this unless we find a teacher.
Right, I think the board played some part in that, because we were actually really pushing to continue the French program.
Right, we really wanted it.
And we asked that it, that the ad be rerun, right?
Extended, extended, yeah.
At some point, so I think that that was, you know-
Yeah, several of us are French parents, you know.
Overly optimistic.
I'll own on that.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and we were, we were really sad to see Mr. Patterson go.
Right.
We wanted someone to fill his shoes, we wanted, at, at one point, we were like, anyone fill his shoes, you know? So, yeah, it's not, it's not for lack of trying or desire.
Maybe we should have given it up sooner, it's definitely possible, but I think we really wanted to keep French, we knew there were all these students that were committed to it.
We might have been in denial a bit.
We didn't know it was going to be that hard.
No, we had no idea.
Could I just pop in here for, Scott, regarding the eighth grade options, what's the, what is the next step? What are, what's the-
That's a great question, because I didn't think about that next step.
And for the kids going into seventh grade also, I want clarification, is Mandarin also going to be an option for them? The current seventh graders?
Two questions. There's two questions, right? There's, will eighth graders and seventh graders be able to take Mandarin or is this just discovered scheduling problem, an issue? And then the next issue is sixth and seventh graders going into French, the two separate, I think, right? You want to know, can seventh and eighth graders take Mandarin?
Yeah.
And then there's also the question about, the ongoing question about French. Yeah, I think you just have to look at all the schedules and see, make sure everything's going to be available.
About the Mandarin situation, absolutely. Regarding the eighth grade French option, I think next, tomorrow, I'll email the curriculum committee and the finance committee to get feedback, additional feedback. And if it's something that we can move forward on, we can't put this in place as early as September 8th. We just have to, actually, it might be the following Monday, we just have to work with the VHS to make that happen. So tomorrow is when I just make sure I reach out to the relevant committees, get your feeling on moving forward, and then pull the trigger if I have to.
Okay.
And then those students will be covered, sorry, those students will be covered going into high school or...
Yes, those eighth graders would then be able to take, I would want them to take French in ninth grade, which again, would mean we'd have to delay the elimination of the program another year at the high school.
And cross our fingers that that teacher stays that whole time and then we don't run into the same program.
And just for clarity here, what year is the French program going to be terminated in the high school?
Well, if we allow the eighth graders to take, who've taken French sixth and seventh grade, take the program, oh gosh, you're looking five years down the road. So I will say, without doing, I'm not much of a mathematician, I'm thinking 2022, that school year, 2022.
So it would cover those students going in for the parents at home who may or may not be watching this? So they would be at least covered until that time?
Till their senior year.
But I mean, I think we have to clarify. Yeah, no, exactly. I think we have to clarify. If we're stuck in this position again, or a future board, it's not necessarily going to be us all sitting here. If we have another, another teacher resign and we can't fill that spot, we could very, I mean, our intention is...
That's a very good point.
Is to maintain that. The other potential scenario is, at one point, we did offer Hebrew to a very small number of students. That number then dwindled to the point where it was no longer feasible because there was no interest. If that scenario happens again where there's, for whatever reason, there's very little interest, it's possible.
I can't keep, right, I can't get the French teacher here for 10, 10 students.
So I just want to be very clear with you and anybody who's watching, we sitting at this table, we can't commit future boards to anything. I mean, I can't, I can't commit a, a board two years from now to maintain a program. I can tell you what our intentions are, but I can't, I can't make that guarantee and...
I guess in part, what I'm thinking and what I'm just, you know, visualizing what's going on, is that the current French teacher who I have met, I think briefly, would be teaching a full course load for the next year and perhaps the year after that.
Right.
And then every year after that year, they're going to be losing a quarter, in essence, of, of their population. I, and it will still be maintained as a full-time position or will that...
That's for us to worry about, but we will have somebody...
That would also kind of affect their likelihood of staying.
Actually, we've got that covered. Because I have already, look, I'm a people person, I've examined all the personnel ramifications. I've actually spoken to all the high school world language teachers back in May, say, hey, this survey's coming, be on the lookout, this is why. And I'm not concerned at this point about that employment, about that person's employment.
Okay, okay. So that's good to know, too. I, I just like to visualize things as they're occurring and, you know, sometimes in the process of doing this, you realize, oh wait, we have a full-time position and someone is being one court, right, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We wish.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will move on with the rest of our agenda, as this is a, a special meeting that was called just to deal with a couple of outstanding issues. We don't have anything for our curriculum and instruction agenda, we similarly don't have anything for our finance and facilities agenda, and we just have two issues for our personnel and communications agenda.
I feel special. Okay, so the first one on the agenda is the approval of a part-time teacher reading instruction specialist. And this was the position, this is a new position, replacing the, the new hire that didn't work out. So Scott, would you like to tell us about?
Cops highly recommend it. We actually had this person in district when we contracted out for services that the individual was a part of, a company that we used, and did a wonderful job for us then. And has four levels of Wilson certification, basically has completed all of the Wilson training. So we anticipate that she'll be able to provide services for all the kids who have 504s and IEPs that call for that intervention. There is the potential that at some point, if IEPs and 504 plans call for it, we would have to expand the number of hours that she is employed, but right now, we're recommending 12 per week.
Yeah, not to, yeah, not to exceed 15 per week.
Oh, sorry, 15, thank you. For clarification, thanks.
Okay, and number two, this is the approval to withhold a salary increment for one of our staff members, employee 0014, for the 2017-18 school year.
Okay, our, and this is a voting session, so, should I move that? Yeah, so we'll just move them, right? And yeah, so can Judy, can you move those?
I would like to move items one and two.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have any policies and regulations or anything for equity and excellence. Does anybody have any old business that they would like to address?
I actually do.
Okay, we're here.
Since it's 8:30. Whatever happened with the question with the music department and the instrumental music course offerings?
It's a great question. This regards providing sectional rehearsals for the middle school students, which we're already doing for the high school students. So I spoke to Mr. Coleman a couple of weeks ago, and he is going to be working with Mrs. Osseme to develop a schedule whereby he can pull students from physical education or lunch. Now, there are some schools that actually allow the kids to eat their lunch, bring their lunch, and they can't possibly eat your lunch while you're rehearsing, but bring your lunch to the sectional rehearsal. They get some time, maybe five, 10 minutes to chow down, and then they spend the other 20 to 30 minutes in rehearsal. So he'll be working on that when we start the school year.
We'll have pullouts for...
But that's the intention.
Excellent.
And we do believe physical education and lunch are the only, the ideal times, really the only times we can do that. Those are the only non-rotating schedules that we know are fixed.
That's PE and lunch?
And lunch.
Okay.
So you said that was the intention, but that is...
Well, we're going to try to make it work. It all depends on the kids' schedules, if we could group, if we have, let's say, five trombone players, but they're all in different classes, and we only have one kid we can pull for rehearsal, we might not be able to run a trombone section rehearsal.
Do they have all the same lunch times?
Unless we do it for lunch. Actually, no, this year, we're actually going to be, we're running multiple sections of lunch for middle school, right here in this cafeteria. I think it's three sections. So that could be an issue, but Mr. Coleman will look into that once he starts the year.
So another issue that we've spoken about in the past with the size of the gym classes, I'm hearing once again that there are only two sections of phys ed for each grade, which would lead to quite a sizable class. And that's been problematic in the past, and I know that we've discussed that. And I kind of want to see a, some sort of a plan to move away from that. I think when you take 60 or so kids...
It's dangerous.
Yeah, it, it's not working really so well.
There's been, I mean, there's been concerns expressed about bullying and stuff like that when you have that many kids running around the field and, or you know, wherever they're running around.
General safety.
In general, the safety too, yeah, getting hit with a volleyball.
Years ago, when my oldest, this was years ago, had an asthma attack, no one noticed. And her friends, you know, she was turning purple, her friends had to drag her over to the nurse, we, we didn't have a middle school nurse, drag her over to the high school nurse. And the teacher at the time was unaware that these students had even left.
Understandably, if there are 60 students.
Yeah, so yeah, it's a major issue.
I'm looking at the schedule now. Looks like for each grade level, we have two sections.